Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting of Monday, June 27, 2016. In accordance with the state's -- oh, roll call, please.
Sure. We can do that. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Dudda?
Mr. Gillette?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
And Mr. Kins. We have a call.
Thank you, sir. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on June 23, 2016, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from the portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act. The matters to be discussed are personnel matters and an HPSA grievance. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Yes.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session. We should be back at 7:30 PM.
Got it. Thank you.
And we're back from executive session. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Dudda?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Mrs. Haas?
Yep.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins. We have a call.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correspondence is as listed on the agenda, and I'm actually going to turn this over to Dr. Schiff at the moment.
Thank you, Madam President. It's with great honor and privilege that I announce to the board my recommendation for our new K through 12 Director of Guidance Services. Jessica Smedley is here tonight, and she comes to us from East Windsor Public School System, where she's been the Supervisor of Counseling Services since 2009. She's also served as a Content Specialist for the Guidance Department, as well as school counselor, also in East Windsor. Prior to that, she was a middle school counselor, where she also did her internship. Mrs. Smedley holds a Bachelor's Degree in Psychology and Labor Studies from Rutgers University, a Master's of Arts in Counseling Services from Rider, an Educational Specialist Degree in Marriage and Family Therapy from TCNJ, and also has graduate coursework to complete her Supervisor Certificate from Kane University. So with that, it's my pleasure to recommend Jessica Smedley as our new Director K through 12 of Guidance. And if you wouldn't mind, Madam President, I ask to bring forward B 1.1, which actually establishes the position of Director K through 12 and eliminates the High School Guidance Director position, as well as B 8.1.1, which is my recommended appointment for Ms. Smedley.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to vote first on item B 1.1 of the agenda under Human Resources. May I have a motion to please approve B 1.1? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky? Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. May I have a motion to please approve item B 8.1.1 on the action agenda under Human Resources, please?
So moved.
Any questions? No. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky? Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
I ask for the board a brief recess for five minutes, just for us to congratulate Mrs. Smedley directly.
No problem. Thank you. Okay, well, you're back.
Just, yeah, just a couple more items. Couple weeks ago, I had the pleasure of shaking close to 580 palms of our seniors as they graduated. It was an extraordinary ceremony. Our kids did a great job. Their speeches were wonderful. Ms. Bingard, our principal, was inspired, and inspired all of us with her words. And although we did have a late start to the graduation due to the, another school that actually was graduating before we did, had problems getting all of their kids to the sun arena on time. Other than that, the event was great. It was wonderful. And we congratulate all of our graduates, class of 2016. Secondly, we had a very special visitor. We had a very special visitor come to our district last week. It was Governor Chris Christie. Held a press conference to discuss his ideas on funding formula, or changing the funding formula, in the state of New Jersey, which I'm sure will receive spirited debate from the southern tip, all the way up to the northernmost part of the state. We were proud to showcase some of the great things that are going on within our district, and it's always a pleasure to host a dignitary. So with that, I turn it back over to you, Madam President.
I actually was in attendance for the event last Tuesday with the governor, and it was actually also very nice to see so many other politicians throughout the state take an interest and come to Hillsborough and see some of the nice things that we've been doing as well, aside from the policy that was discussed. So it was actually a really nice day. And thank you very much to Dr. Schiff, Mr. Mahmoud, and our team for very quickly setting this up. So, thank you. Now, we are going to move on to the approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the June 13, 2016, executive session minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? No? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Actually, to motion, any abstentions?
Oh, sorry. Any abstention, abstentions, and I abstain.
Okay, got it.
I'm abstention.
Mr. Cohen?
Steve Cohen?
Ms. Santafonte?
Okay.
And I think that is it. All in favor, right? Aye. No? Abstains. We're good.
Okay.
It's been a while, so, excuse me. May I have a motion to please approve the June 13, 2016, regular session minutes?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No's? Abstentions? I abstain?
Got it.
And Ms. Santafonte, as well.
Just Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Got it. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, now I'm actually going to open it up to comments from the public on the action agenda specifically. Good evening.
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Zobelli, Nine Upper Neshanet Court. I'm here once again. The last meeting, it was mentioned that you had all looked at the directive by the Obama Administration concerning the transgendered bathrooms. So I was wondering if there was a further update on that, if you were still in considering your options. So if you haven't updated, I would like one. And then, I also, I would like to thank Hillsborough for hosting the governor. I was very happy to see him here. I have been speaking about this idea of fair funding for quite a while, so I was happy to hear him speak on that. And I was just wondering, a question to the whole board, if the governor ever asked you all to go out on the trail with him, in support of his funding, fairness funding formula, which I would assume would help benefit Hillsborough, would you all go in support of that?
Well, let me answer the second question first, if I may.
Okay. Yes.
What we do here as a Board of Education, and what we also believe in politically outside of here, are two separate things. So I was there as a member of the Board of Education Tuesday, welcoming the governor. My beliefs on it are, you know, separate, and I'm not going to necessarily voice them here, but I think any additional funding that comes to Hillsborough is always positive. And personally, if he did ask us, I think that's something that we would have to do, not as representatives of the Boards of Education, but representative, something that we would do in our own personal time. So our local legislators are very vocal as to where their opinions are as well. And you know what? If they asked, I would go, you know, personally, but again, it's up to everybody else. We also have jobs outside of here, too. So it's always tough to take time off. And as far as the first question, Dr. Schiff, I'll relay that to you, if there's any update. I don't think that there is, so.
No, but we can send you a copy of our transgender policy. It's online.
I was just wondering when you, when you might have, specific to this directive and specific to the Obama Administration, that's, I mean, I know you have--
Our policy, yeah, our policy is consistent with state and federal law.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Goodhue.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Henry Goodhue, 16 Laurel Drive, Hillsborough Education Association. I had a couple of questions, one from a previous board meeting, where we asked for the number related to the cost of having the computers engraved. We were told we'd be able to have that at this meeting.
Ms. Mahmoud?
Yes. Mr. Goodhue, the price, we had spoken to our Director of Technology. The retail price on the etching is $25 a unit. We, because we bulk, bought the items in bulk, we did get a discount, so we paid $15 a unit for the etching.
Okay, and how many units did we purchase this year?
About 800 or so. A little over 800 units.
So in excess of $12,000 or more for the etching? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And my other reason for standing here tonight is, as we've spoken about already, everyone is aware that the governor visited our high school last week and unveiled a new school funding plan. In line with the question regarding computers, I would also like to ask for the aggregate sum that was spent to do this on such short notice. I understand that some of it may have already been line itemed, be it mulch, whatever, but there were excessive things that went beyond what typically would have been budgeted for, and I was interested in getting that sum.
Mr. Mahmoud?
We can look at that, Henry, as far as, but I can assure you that the maintenance budget was not adjusted for the governor's visit. The idea of our beautification of the high school was something that our board has pushed the administration. We want our facilities to look nice. So the idea that the high school, what we did for that visit, is going to be the standard for all of our schools. So the idea of putting the mulch beds out there and getting the beautification intact, if we have to invest some money in our staff to work in the summer, to have all of our buildings model what the high school looked like, we pushed our staff, and they responded in making our high school look really good in a short time. That is the goal for all other eight buildings, without exceeding any line item or spending any additional money. So our goal is to stay within budget, but to push the staff to make sure our buildings look nice.
Absolutely. And, but will we have to revisit that building, since we are hosting programs there over the summer, and possibly reinvest in making it look as such because of the heavy usage throughout the summer?
Well, I'm hoping we're going to maintain, as opposed to reinvest. That's my goal. But I do understand your question. I will go back, take a look at that, but I can assure you that that standard for the high school is a standard that we will use with all our buildings. And we are proud of the way the high school looked, and we're going to be proud of every other building that's going to look just as nice as the high school, and we're going to make sure that happens for the opening in September.
So we could follow up at the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. And to the board, I would just like to say, it was a rather ironic twist to see money spent to welcome the governor, who has consistently underfunded Hillsborough public schools. Annual budgets, new rounds of negotiations, certainly ushering speeches regarding difficult decisions, the constraints of a 2% cap, and the need to be fiscally responsible. This year's been no different. Positions were eliminated, staff members' net take-home pay continued to decrease, and negotiations have stalled, yet money was quickly spent to prepare for the arrival of the very person who consistently denies these schools what they are owed under the current school funding formula. And what makes the, what was the value of this expenditure? How has the district benefited from this investment of funds that we are told are in short supply? Funds that could have benefited our schools were diverted for a 30-minute speech that has ultimately cast Hillsborough schools in an unfavorable light on the national stage. Perhaps we should take a moment to consider the reality of the fairness that was unfortunately unveiled in one of our schools, schools filled with employees who endeavor to educate every student equally and prepare them for the future, regardless of that student's background. The governor's formula has been described as a reverse Robin Hood plan by the Educational Law Center, where he robs from the poor to give to the rich. Unfortunately, being that this destructive, morally questionable plan was unveiled in Hillsborough, described as a leafy suburb that is 78% white by media sources like Slate, we now find our town being used as the example which highlights how suburban districts would benefit, and urban ones would fail under the quote-unquote "fairness formula." The New York Times Editorial Board referred to Governor Christie's funding proposal as "a toxic, fiscally unsound plan that was unsupported by research, and did nothing more than pit poor white, poor urban students and families against suburbanites, who the governor hopes will seek relief on the backs of those New Jersey residents who are already disadvantaged." Is this how Hillsborough should be portrayed? Does this reflect the pillars of our character education curriculum and foundation of our values as a community? Will you allow this narrative to overshadow the accolades your schools, students, and staff have rightfully earned? Without question, public school funding needs to be addressed, but before the current formula is thrown out, and a new one embraced that disadvantages at-risk children and destroys entire school districts, I encourage you to fight for what we should have received in the first place. Hillsborough schools are not a place of divisiveness and disadvantage, yet that has been lost in the national narrative that now places our district at the epicenter of someone else's aspirations, aspirations that have little to do with helping public schools, and even less with the values of Hillsborough. Take a stand for public school funding, but not this one. If, like myself, you are troubled by the plan and the fact that it is now sadly tied to our district, I encourage you to speak up. It is embarrassing to see the merit of our schools take a backseat to the governor's proposed fairness formula. Release a statement, stand up for morally and responsibly funded public schools, but most of all, I implore you to stand up for Hillsborough schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other, yes, Mr. Cooper?
Can I just put it out there that the board had nothing to do with the governor coming here? It was not our decision, it was not brought to a vote or anything, it wasn't a board policy.
I don't understand why you had to say that.
Dr. Schiff, do you want to address that?
Well, I can, I can tell you that I was contacted by the Department of Education, by the Commissioner himself, on Saturday. I had conversations at that point with, with the governor's office on Sunday, spoke with our board president. You know, regardless of what you think of the policy, I'm not sure that there is a scenario where we would deny our governor an opportunity to visit our schools.
Absolutely.
I don't, I'm, you know, the, the idea that, that a school district would say no to a sitting governor, I think would, would be disrespectful to the office of the governorship. So I spoke with the board president, and, and gave authorization to do so.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Schiff. So, yes, Mrs. Haas.
I'd like to know what we did in the high school. I'd like to know what improvements we made to the high school for this visit.
You said improvements? We did no facility, all we did is mulch, which we would do anyway, and we did some, we added, and I don't know the terminology of the buds or the, but we did do that, and we're going to do that for all the buildings. So the question you, we made no improvements, we've maintained our buildings, we will do that with all other eight buildings. That standard that, that we looked at at the high school will remain that way for the rest of the summer, and every building will look as nice as the high school. Our goal is to keep every building looking nice. So--
With mulch?
Well, mulch, we made, we cleaned the weeds, we put more work on the buildings and grounds effort, but we, that's a standard that we're going to use with the other eight buildings. But we didn't spend money going out, that we're going to buy mulch anyway, we didn't buy anything that we were going to beautify our schools with, to begin with.
Well, I sort of agree with Henry's point. I mean, why would we do this for the governor if we don't do it for our students?
Because he's the governor.
I'm not really caring about that.
Obviously. So let's just carry on with another conversation, another time. Is this a discussion for the Board of Education right now? Whether or not you like the governor or not, whether you care or not, I don't care. Let's move on with the agenda.
She's just asking a question.
I don't care. Take, discuss whether or not it was the right thing to do.
We're not going to, we're not going to get into a political argument--
I'm not discussing politics.
No, 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 and I'm not, I'm not.
Obviously, she is.
I'm not.
I wouldn't say that.
I'm not.
I asked about the use of resources for a purpose other than our students.
Because he's the governor. When the governor shows up, it's just like the president showing up.
The plan has been, we've discussed--
No, it isn't.
We've, we've--
He is the elected leader of the state of New Jersey. Out of respect to the office, it's the right thing to do. And no matter who was the governor, be it Corzine McGreevy, or anybody else, it would have been the same thing.
I don't recall any of them coming here. And frankly, I don't recall him coming here, other than to push a political agenda, so--
No, I thought it was a financial agenda.
Move on.
I thought it was a financial agenda.
Okay, so, we're going to move on?
No, racist.
Right now?
Financial agenda.
Okay, well, I don't believe that we would support racism, but okay. Thank you. Anyway, on to the action agenda, please. So, Dr. Schiff, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, the HIBs investigative list, overnight field trips, field trip destinations, to approve the Health and Physical Education Summer Credit Recovery Program, to approve teachers participating in the Workshop Model Institute 2.0 for grades K through 3, as well as grades 4 through 8. Also, motion to approve teachers participating in the Next Generation Science Standards Summer Institute, approve the nurse-to-work in the ELL Summer Enrichment Program, to approve the membership between the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and Princeton University and the Teachers and Scholars Consortium for next academic school year, to approve the District Technology Plan for 2016, 2019, to approve the curriculum writing and common assessment development as listed, to approve transfers and out-of-district placements, and to approve the out-of-district placement as listed.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve--
So moved.
I have to, I have to finish speaking first, sir. Items A1 through A14 on the action agenda, please.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any need to pull any--
No.
--items apart? No.
No, can I just say something?
Sure.
I thought it was very interesting to see. I know we've always had issues with gym credit, so it was nice to see you on the website, the whole program for the remedial gym class. Just something to maybe think in the future, for children who have lots of labs, you know, as a parent, I'm actually worried that, you know, three days of lab is not going to really get us through our senior year, that maybe we're a little more proactive for some of the kids that are scientifically, of course, overloaded. I, it was a nice program, I thought it was very nice and put together. I even talked to Mr. Davis about it. But just something maybe for some kids who are, because of labs, maybe be more proactive, so they're not in their senior year worried about, will they make it because of gym?
Yeah.
But it was a nice program.
Okay. So, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Dr. Schiff?
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources. We already approved B.1.1. Also approve the resolution to create one special education position, to approve the resignations as listed, approve revised leaves of absence, revise long-term substitutes, change of contracts, approve transfers and changes in assignments, the renewal of tenured teachers, and the approval of the appointments. We've already approved our new director, but also a teacher, school nurse, long-term substitutes, clerical assistants, co-curriculum advisors, substitutes, and student teachers. Also to approve REACH testing advisor and the REACH Senior Internship. Also approve the credit recovery program, and to approve summer work, as indicated on the attachment, as well as the extended school year program. To approve staff members for the RVCC concurrent enrollment, as well as extra period coverage, approve guidance counselor extra work coverage, as well as approve teacher-in charge compensations. I ask that we pull B 18 and B 19 for further board conversation and discussion. B 20 is to authorize the superintendent to approve contracts for non-administerative personnel during the summer, and to revise the acting principles days to correspond with, with Ms. Heisels' extended leave.
Correct. Okay, so, we are looking to approve items B 1.2, taking out that we already did the action on B 8.11.
Yes.
And then, B 17, and then also B 20. Is that correct?
No.
Is there a 21?
No, no.
18 and 19 are off.
Right.
B 20 and 21.
B 20 and 21. I hope that makes sense.
21 today.
It's the revised one. The email that we received earlier with--
Right, that we just made a revision.
So.
Yeah, acting principle extended.
Okay, are we all clear? Do we have any discussion before I call for roll?
No.
No? Okay. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely.
Do you need a motion?
Sorry. May I have a motion to please approve?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Dana C., Dana and Dana got you.
Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Got it. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Dr. Schiff?
I ask for the following, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions prices for the 2016-2017 school year, accept the donation of $200 to be used as a stipend for the advisor of the Hillsborough Rocking Raiders as part of the Sparkle Effect organization at HHS by Catherine Doyle, as well as furniture for an outdoor classroom in Amsterdam from Van Cleef and Country Classics.
Before I call for a roll, I'd like to thank both of those folks for the donations to our district. So, may I have a motion to approve items C.1 through C.6 of the action agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud?
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And so, because I'm running things differently tonight, I'm actually gonna do committee reports now. So first, we're gonna go to the education committee. Do we have a report from the education committee on? Okay. Mrs. Haas?
I think we're doing committee reports. But I'm ready.
Okay. Skipped over, because it actually wasn't listed on the agenda. Okay.
The education committee met on June 14th at 7:30 in the morning. We did a very, very brief review of the calendar for 2017-18, and we will continue our discussion on that. We also looked at the, oh, we had a wonderful presentation by Joel Handler about our technology plan for the years 2016 through 2019, and it was an extremely comprehensive plan like this, 90% of which I probably don't understand, but Joel was very wonderful, as usual, in explaining it to us. So, basically, it covered state reporting and NJ TRACS technology readiness reports. It required needs assessment, reflection, and adjustments. It included training requests by building, professional development needs, budget needs, and overarching goals and objectives of the plan. And everybody on the education committee was very pleased with the report and how comprehensive it was. Joel has always been extraordinarily thoughtful, not only in terms of what has to be done in the short term, but as, always thinking about the long term as well, and we genuinely appreciate that. There were a couple of other informational items that we discussed. Our director of special services, Kathy Warlick, attended to talk about the local district special education public report for 2014 and 15. It contained a lot of data that was from October 15th of the previous, the ending school year, and our percentages have improved. This was good news, and we continue to look for the least restrictive environment for our students as one of our top goals. We discussed summer training institutes for the professional staff, in-service days, et cetera. We talked about the staff laptop collection and redistribution. We reviewed our graduation statistics, which were very good, and that's basically it. It was reiterated that our graduates received $8.5 million in scholarships, and scholarships that were given out at senior awards night totaled $110,000.
That's great.
That was the education report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I actually do have a question about the etching and why we're doing the etching.
Oh, Joel did address that, and actually, as it turns out, it has saved us money. There were a couple of, let's say, misappropriated machines located elsewhere, and it was the etching on the top of the machines that actually were the reason why they were brought back to us.
But how many possibly could've been lost versus what we're actually spending?
I think there were something like four, so it was a thousand bucks.
But we're spending how much on the etching?
Over $12,000.
Oh, no.
Well, what, yeah, what we-
No, 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 these are not 250 a piece, these are more-
About $1,200 or so.
But what, yeah, what, what Mr. Handler spoke about was that we'll never know how much theft this avoided because of the etching on, on the computers. The etching can't be rubbed off, it, it's very difficult to resell them with, with the etching on it, and that was the, the argument for doing it. It's not, it's not for PR purposes, it was a theft deterrent, which was recommended.
These days, the computer come equipped on the chip itself that you can actually detect or detect any tap or anything like that.
Yeah.
So if it is the technology that already is embedded in the laptop, why are we not using that?
There, there's indications that there's workarounds and there's other ways that, that good, that thieves with, with a knowledge of software can get around it. What, what happens is when they see it, they're, they're less likely to take it. So, that, that was the reason.
Okay.
It's like having two locks on your door.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I understand. I, I just thought, you know, it can automatically prevent theft with the, with the technology that is already embedded in the laptop. So it can shut off, it can-
I didn't know we had such a rampant theft problem, or-
I, I don't, I don't think we do, but, but again, it's one of those things, our teachers go on workshops, they take it home with them, these are things that are ubiquitous, so-
I hope they wouldn't leave it in the car.
You know, they're, they're left all over the place. But the, the idea that, you know, it has the H on it-
No, I understand, but even if they, you left it on your front seat or your backseat of your car, doesn't matter if it says H or not, they're gonna break in and take it. So I would hope that people wouldn't leave them there.
Yeah, I, I think that-
I think for the most part, our staff are very responsible.
General question is, and could we have avoided that spending?
Yeah.
That's all.
I'm just asking only because I personally think that there's better ways to spend that money, but that's just my own opinion, so, I'm sorry. Dr. Schiff, since I was not present at the last operations meeting and Mr. Gillette is not here, I'm gonna actually allow you to give out the report there.
Sure, my pleasure. We had an operations meeting on June 15th. Mr. Gillette, I believe, Mr. Cooper, and Mr. Kins was available by phone. We had myself, Mr. Mahmud, Mr. Bolden, Mr. Ellis, our purchasing assistant, our supervisor of transportation, our architects were there, as well as Mr. Farrar, our township administrator, and David Coys, who's our township planner, were there. And the last two were there to discuss with the operations committee the sustainable jersey program, and to encourage the board to give it some consideration, after both shared with us some of their experiences, and the, the township has been recognized for their sustainability. The administration will review what the district has already done over the past few years regarding participation in sustainable jersey, and will contact other school districts to get feedback on participation and what the actual commitment would be moving forward. Under transportation, we had a conversation about our non-public school transportation. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids on the non-publics. Mr. Mahmud is going to be communicating with the non-public administrators on where we are currently, and will continue to work cooperatively with non-public administrators and their parents to clarify and, and communicate kind of where we are at this particular point in time. The operations committee also discussed the summer camp busing for Special Olympics in Lawrenceville. Some of board members may remember that there was an idea coming out of the operations committee to cost share that busing. After it went through attorney review, it seemed that the board may be on the hook for additional expenses, and as a result, administration will contact the parent coordinator and share that the district will not be participating in the shared transportation costs, and that the administration will also share contact information if parents are interested in privately funding transportation to the Special Olympics. Cameras outside on the field, we're going to add additional cameras to the lacrosse wall and the football field area in order to increase security in those areas. We have had vandalism in both those areas and without cameras there. It, it compromised our ability to, to complete a thorough investigation and to bring those who would vandalize our school to justice. Under construction projects, we have many. The paving at the middle school will begin on July 5th. We did have a pre-construction meeting with our general contractor, everything is in order, all of the construction schedules are, are there, engaged, and we're ready to go. The artificial turf field replacement is well on its way. If you had a chance to actually look at it, it has been stripped, and the carpet's going to be pulled up shortly. We do have, all of the approvals and the submittals have been completed, and the new field will hopefully be in place in early August. We do have a woods road partial roof replacement project that's also going to be going on, and, and we also received an update on the, on the HES heating and ventilation system, that's a ceiling-mounted unit on the Amwell side, that that has begun. We actually saw pictures today of that. Transfinder software update, our transportation supervisor shared with us her progress on doing that. We have, we completed the bid specifications for the new band uniforms for our high school. We had emergent HVAC repairs at both of the high school, as well as, as well as the middle school. We had coils that needed to be replaced. And we rescheduled the meeting, and we discussed our district security plan. Lots of things were discussed.
Lots of things. Okay. So I would like to turn it over now to Ms. Santafonte for human resources. Do you have anything to report?
I don't have much to report, since we already voted on it.
Yes, we did.
There were a couple of resolutions which we did vote on, which was the change in the director of guidance from nine to 12 to K to 12, that we added a position, special ed position at HES due to enrollment and student needs, and that the supervisor of health and phys ed, that position was being changed from a 10-month to a 12-month position that we voted on, to align up with the other district supervisors. And then, pretty much, everything else was confi, remains confidential at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Judy loves that line.
So, right now, I'd actually like to open up the floor to the public on any other business at this time. Name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Abelli, Nine Up and Ashanet Court. I just want a clarification, so has the etching of the computers been completed already?
I'm sorry, say again?
Has the etching of the computers, the new laptops, been done?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I would've said, don't go ahead with it. I concur with Ms. Haley that there may have been better uses of those funds, based also on what Mr. Dudda said, but what can you do now? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abelli. Good evening.
My name is Teresa Lu, and I'm the new public relations manager for the high school robotics team, Team 75. I just wanna give a quick update on the team. We recently elected new leadership, so all the officers are now new, and we plan to continue moving forward with our team. The new leaders, like our two CEOs, are now Maddy Valier and Chris Rothman, and we just attended an off-season competition on June 25th, which was Saturday, and we are still on track to host our summer enrichment program with the middle school. And currently, we are working on expanding our chairman's program, our robot, and volunteer programs by brainstorming outreach events, programs, and improvements to our team. And on behalf of all the new leadership, Team 75 looks forward to working together with the Board of Ed this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We always look forward to the updates from you guys and the invitations, so thank you very much.
Good evening, Leanne Johnson, Two Woodville Terrace. I stand before you tonight representing the Triangle Home and School Association Executive Board. As president, I've had the privilege of working alongside amazing teaching staff, instructional assistants, secretaries, custodians, support staff, who on a daily basis go above and beyond to educate our children. They plan events for the HSA, such as mom prom, daddy-daughter dance, they run laps with their students at the fun run in about 90-degree heat, they attend monthly HSA meetings, book assemblies, and continually come up with inventive ways for parents and teachers to work together in partnership to provide the excellent education that our children receive in Hillsborough. And to put it briefly, we, as the HSA executive board, stand in support of the Hillsborough Education Association, and we urge you to settle the contract quickly and fairly, so that it has very little impact on our students at the opening of the school year, and we will be there in support of the mediation session on July 14th. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Henry Goodhue, 16 Laurel Drive, Hillsborough Education Association. There's two points of clarification I wanted to make. One being that at no point did I say the board should adopt a policy denying any duly-elected public official access to our buildings or speaking, and nor did I say that we should say that someone could not come. What I asked is that the board, prior to having our district tied to a funding formula that could possibly hurt other public schoolchildren, that we ask for what we're rightfully owed under the current formula, which would be substantial enough to operate our district. So I would like to just clarify that point, that I was not saying we should not have someone here, but that we should ask for what we should've been receiving in the first place. Second, I would like just a point of clarification on the upkeep of the buildings that was discussed. I know that mulch is standard, but with the arrival of the governor last week, we planted multiple rose bushes outside. I know that we went above and beyond with replacing some ceiling tiles, possibly cleaning vents and things of that nature. So should we expect that there will be planting at all of the schools? Will there be new, there's new plantings in the budget for every single school? I just would like some clarification on that, please.
Yes, Mr. Mahmud?
We, I will, Henry, as I mentioned earlier, the format, the superintendent and I have had multiple discussions about that standard, so the standard that's at the high school will be the standard with the other aid buildings.
Okay. And was there any other extra equipment or supplies that would not have been purchased that needed to be purchased for this event?
No, we, as far as, I can tell you that the governor's advance team was at the high school the day before and the day, actually, the day of, and I can tell you that they come with, and I, I can't give you the particulars for, for various reasons-
Sure.
-but I can tell you that the governor's staff was on-site preparing a good, 99% of the high school was prepared by nine Hillsborough employees. The governor's staff actually had nails and hammers, and they were working at our high school with our permission on things that they were building on behalf of the governor's beach. So, but I, as I said, you, you wanted some other numbers, we'll look at that, but I did wanna mention that, that the governor's team was at the high school, and that they were the laborers in preparing the stage setting for the governor.
So does that mean that we incurred no extra operational costs, overtime, et cetera, to have this happen? Any supplies extra beyond what was normally allocated?
Yeah, if, if we did, they're de minimis, and I don't have the number now, but that's something that I promised I'd give you at the next board meeting, we'll, we'll take a look at it. But like I said, the laborers for the governor's office, and I forgot to mention that, spent quite a number of hours preparing for that with our folks on the sideline. They were doing the work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other comments at this time. Do I have any comments from the Board of Education? Yes, Mr. Cooper?
Happy note, or at least one happy note. I attended Flag Day at HES, and I wanna say, it was the biggest program yet, they did a great job. I think there was over, there was around 10 to 15 service parents and grandparents were there with their kids, and all the kids there dressed up, and they sang, and it was very nice, and they got a new flag, which I think every school in the district got this special flag that flew above the Capitol for the girls, some connection to the Girl Scouts in some way. But it was a very nice program, and it was very nice, and I was glad I could attend. Mr. Gillette's usually there, he was not there this year, I got, I guess, to take his place. So happy news. And then I have one other comment, not so happy, or just a question.
Yes, sir.
In terms of graduation for next year, has that been addressed, and has it already been assigned?
Yes, we have, we have confirmation for next year's graduation at the Sun Arena.
Can that be changed?
No.
We voted on that already?
It's been booked.
It's been booked, we have to book a year in advance.
Was there discussion prior to my coming here about why to have it there and not have it on our own nicely, new field?
No, well, the background is, first of all, actually, I'm thinking, if we did graduate at the school that day, people would've been complaining about how hot it was, and I believe, did it right?
And I believe it was hot at the Sun Arena, two people were complaining, students were.
There's air conditioning, there.
Didn't work very well.
Okay.
Yes.
We have been told by our township, not officials, but the fire marshal and police chief, that it is a safety hazard for us to hold the graduation indoors.
What about outdoors?
It also poses a safety and risk for, for various reasons.
Yeah, the, the board had extended conversation about it three, three years ago, as we, as we talked about it. One, one of the other driving decisions for me was that we had probably 5,000 people that attended the graduation ceremony. We would only allow about half of that if it was on-site. So grandparents, brothers, sisters of extended family can't come to the Hillsborough High School graduation if it's on-site. There was one year that I was here that it was an excessive heat warning. We had, it was close to 98 degrees, close to 130 on the field at that point in time. We actually gave the kids frozen water bottles as they, as they walked out. You know, you, you want the graduation ceremony to be just great and comfortable and safe. When we put people, including elderly and, and young children, out in very hot conditions, there are risks that are associated with it, and because we don't have an inside facility that's air-conditioned, in fact, my first year here, we had to actually bring it inside during that time. I think we had four to six people that were actually treated. We had people fainting in the, in the gymnasium where we held, where we held the, the graduation ceremony. And at that point, only, I think, two tickets per family could come. So, you know, we simulcast, I mean, we, we do the workarounds, there's certainly a lot of schools that, that continue to hold their graduations on-site. We are too big to continue to do that safely and to have everybody who wishes to come to the graduation, come to the graduation. One of the things that I am concerned about with the Sun Arena is that its location makes it very difficult to get in and to get out. Once you're in, it's comfortable, it's nice, it's a, it's an enjoyable experience, but getting there, especially this time because of the delay, but even two years ago when we had it there before, it's not convenient. We are looking at the rack, which is in Piscataway on Rutgers campus, which is much easier to park and to get in and to get out. The problem is, it's not air-conditioned yet, but I understand that that is part of the Capitol improvement projects that the new athletic director has prioritized. So hopefully, within the next year or two, that would be the place that we would eventually graduate.
Can I ask the cost involved in renting the Sun Arena?
Yeah, I don't have that, but there's also, they, when we, when we looked at this initially, because we do, we do have additional expenses when we do it on-site, too, because we have to set up for, for inside graduation as well-
Right.
-the overtime costs and everything. We can get that to you, so you can actually see it. My recollection was that it wasn't a significant difference, Mr. Mahmud.
I agree, I just don't have it in front of me.
I think the bottom line is, there's not enough space to have it outside.
Where we graduate?
When it is marched and stuff like that.
Don't we have approved contracts?
I don't know, that's a question for Mr. Mahmud.
It's below the bid threshold, it's below, we don't approve every contract below the, this is below the quote threshold even. The amount of money we spent was-
This is more than a contract, it's a policy decision as well.
It's below the bid threshold, it's below, we don't approve every contract below the, this is below the quote threshold even. The amount of money we spent was...
This is more than a contract, it's a policy decision as well.
Well, that's different, but the, the dollar amount is below any bidding requirement, so, but we can, if you want to talk about it at a board committee, that's, that's up to the board.
Well, I just want to understand if we've given like a blanket approval for the high school to negotiate with Sun Arena in perpetuity. I don't, I don't recall making that decision.
I thought we had a discussion around that, because you have to book it.
Oh, we did, we've, we've discussed it, but I don't think we made it, again, in perpetuity.
I hope, I hope it wouldn't be.
I remember we had this discussion, it was early on in my career here, it seemed like it was 10 years ago, but Karen unfortunately wasn't able to get through the Sun Arena, and I think the majority of the board was quite upset. It was helpful that we could get signed up at the Sun Arena the following year, which was this year, and that's what I recall. I don't recall any majority of the board thinking this is the wrong way to do it, because if it was, then we wouldn't have done it.
A lot of it, I mean, honestly...
I think you're right.
Yeah, and Steve, you are correct, and that's how it did happen, to my recollection as well, but, you know, at the end of the day, a lot of the recommendation came from our fire marshal and from our police chief on the graduation, and our hands were kind of tied, and we wanted to be proactive, and we wanted to make it a safe, comfortable environment for everybody. Listen, you know what, in a perfect world, of course, we want to graduate here on-site, but we've grown to the point, and it's become an unsafe and dangerous environment. Now, I know, Mrs. Haas, you were there for that inside graduation a few years ago, and it was not pleasant, and I, I remember sitting, watching one of my neighbors, who shall remain lameness, who had just had open heart surgery the week before, and I kept thinking, oh my God, watching him, literally sweat for his shirt, watching his child graduate.
I have, I have no disagreement with the fact that the gymnasium is not in any way an appropriate venue for there, but I thought at other times, we had discussed other options, such as Rutgers, such as having the graduation at another time...
Earlier, later.
If you had bad weather predicted, postponing it to the next day or postponing it to some other time. And, you know, I don't think that that discussion should end.
I know, and, and I totally get that, but I think, at least, if you think about, logistically, a lot of people do almost go on a vacation immediately the next day with their families and everything, and so if you're sitting and tying people and saying, well, we might graduate on this day, but we could possibly, I mean, it's just, it's a lot to start to do, and it's too much, it's, it's just a lot of work, and, listen, I agree, Sun Bank is not convenient to get to, and it's, as far as getting in and out, but once you're there, it's nice. But we, you know what, we'll talk about it again.
And, and I honestly hope we can get to the rack.
Yeah.
You know, it's, and we, we may even want to talk about, do we want to go into the rack now, knowing that it's not air-conditioned?
It's comfortable.
You don't want to be in a rack. I've been there for graduation. It's worse than being outdoors on the field in summertime.
Yeah, I've been there in May for, yeah.
There's no air, there's no air, there's no movement of air.
I was actually there for my...
It's suffocating, the seats are very uncomfortable.
Yeah. I, I was, I was there for my son's graduation, and it was, and it was comfortable, but it was, it was comfortable outside, and it was May.
Right, but if you have a night...
So, it's a whole different ball of wax when it's 90 degrees, you know, that, that's there, so, you know, if we're going to go off-site, if we're going to, you know, inconvenience, we want to be comfortable.
And RVCC was too small for our needs.
Yeah.
So, we can't do that.
It's part too small.
And then we've looked, but you know what, we'll talk about it, we'll take it back to the committee level again, and we'll have these rigorous discussions at that time.
But can I at least say something nice about the graduation?
Yes, Mrs.
I know we had issues getting there. Families were very appreciative when the instant alert went out, because then they could stop wearing, but myself and many parents are very happy that the kids got their gowns, got to keep gowns this year...
Yeah.